And now, open forum, if anybody has anything that they want to share. Now is the time, go ahead.
This is the Grand Marais zoning ordinance. Page thirty-four.
Can you step up to it?
This is the Grand Marais zoning ordinance. Page thirty-four. Number... Five, portable signs. A, there shall be no more than one portable sign per business. I don't believe you've come in compliance to that law since I brought it up last week. Probably because you don't have to. Also, which was not in the mayor's blog, because it reports what you want rather than the facts, which this camera records.
Do you have a specific comment that you'd like to make, or a request that you'd like to make of the council?
I think that you need to come into compliance with the laws, the ordinances. The other thing is that, as I brought up last week, in the zoning meeting of the CIRBA SRI request, Mr. Kennedy informed CIRBA, and I believe Larson is his partner, when it was clear the zoning board was not going to pass their zoning change, brought up and told them to buy the property, do what they want, break the zoning ordinances, because Grand Marais does not enforce them.
That was, I thought that's absolutely unfounded.
And Mr. Beckwith, zoning commissioner, who is in surgery today, couldn't come, said he will verify this, as I'm sure that Mr. Miller and Mr. Geary probably will too, because they're going to say the truth, I would assume.
If your comment is based on trying to verify information from that meeting, and/or commenting upon why that was not reported as you reported it in the mayor's blog, which is a private blog, I might mind you, not a government-sponsored blog, the situation would be that I asked people who were at that meeting as well, and that was not corroborated, so it's not my practice to...
Did you go to the zoning commissioners and ask them?
I did speak with two of the zoning commissioners, I was not able to get a hold of the others. So that is why it was not reported, because I was not able to corroborate it.
I will bring Mr. Beckwith here.
I think you should probably bring everybody here.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Go ahead.
We can have a nice conversation about who said what at the planning commission.
You know, and I'm not sure what your purpose is.
My purpose is you were not here last week, but I said the city is practicing two sets of rules. And I said, and I'll say it again, as I stated, until the city, being its elected officials, can police each other, and Mr. Roth, you have the power that comes with his job, but you are losing the respect of the people, leading by example. Don't expect people to follow this ordinance, anything in it, if you guys can't do it yourself. And I think it's pretty clear, at the last meeting, you said you felt you were in compliance with the ordinance. I just read it. It says, "One sign per business." You have two. Thank you for your time.
Any other comments?
Well, I have a few, while we're talking. This is what you get for having a camera. I suppose everybody kind of knows that, but people like to come and make comments, and now you have a permanent record twice of somebody basically telling lies about one of your own city councilors. So, something you might want to think about in terms of, we might need to put a policy together about what types of public comments are appropriate and what aren't. I think there's some boundary setting that needs to happen here. In terms of his allegations about the mayor, the mayor's signs are permitted and in compliance with the zoning ordinance. If he wants to read one section out of the ordinance and think he understands it, that's not how it works. He does one sign that's, as he described, and he's got a sign that's permitted. And there's lots of businesses in town that have more than one sign, I think everybody knows that. Jay's signs are perfectly legal and in compliance. The things that he said about Councilor Kennedy are ridiculous and unfounded, and I'm sure that anybody but Mr. Beckwith would tell you that. And you should go ask him if you have any concerns about that. But it's pretty frustrating to have somebody come to a meeting and co-opt the camera to spew ridiculous lies and have us all sit here and just say, "Thank you for coming." I don't think that's right.
Well...
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think, you know, at the planning commission meeting, comments that Todd has made, you know, are totally unfounded, and of course, we don't record the planning commission minutes, so, meetings, so whatever he says, there's no way to refute or, you know, dismiss those comments, you know, it's on public record now, and there it is.
Well, I do believe that this, if there's going to be a policy change regarding, you know, in regards to this sort of a phenomenon, I think that it should be towards the actual recording of all commission and committee meetings, so that we have a record to go back to. I think that that would, in this particular situation, that would solve it very quickly. I do also think that the public forum is a very useful tool that we have. I would like to not have it be burdened by a lot of particular rules and such. I take it upon myself, in the past couple of meetings, to try and make sure that, you know, people from the public who have things to say to the council are directed in their conversation to a constructive point for the council. In the past few meetings, I have not known exactly what that point is, so it's been very hard for me to move with that. But, you know, also on the record, I would like, you know, I'd like to say that I do think that the public forum is really very useful, and I encourage, still encourage people to come and speak, but I also would really encourage people to have a very specific concept of what they're saying. And, yes, you know, the ordinance does say that there's one sign per business, but it also allows for signs on personal property. So I do think that there's, you know, is there gray area there? There might be, I don't know, I'll have to look at it.
I don't think there's any gray area there.
But as far as, as far as the relationship between the city council's respect in the community and the application of ordinances, I've spoken to quite a few people who have said that they appreciate that we give things the conversation that we do. So I think that if we do any changes, I think it should be to record the other meetings, so that we have a record and we can follow through on what exactly was said. And that seems to, that would probably be the best way to ensure that this kind of a thing can be settled in the future.
Yeah, and I'm not even sure that that's even a relevant issue, because it's the end result of the action that's taken at a meeting. It's not the conversation that takes place during a meeting that is really that relevant. In this case, obviously, the claim that something was said that was clearly never said, you know, is disturbing, but in fact, it doesn't affect the outcome of that meeting. I mean, the meeting outcome is very clear, the minutes are recorded, the action is defined, the action is consistent with the requirements of the ordinance. The council's decision is consistent with the...
Reinforces that.
...requirements of the ordinance. I think we move on from this.
I think everyone gets their five minutes to say. I don't think we have to react to it. The point is, it's their opportunity to speak. We don't have to say anything, and we just need to listen. It's my understanding, if there's some issue with your sign, he needs to go another route to make that official. It's not to come here for five minutes and talk about it, he needs to come to your office, Mike, right, and make a...
Well, I guess that depends on what his purpose is.
Well, I just mean, if someone, you know, questions that, that there's another path to accomplish that, not coming here.
The city council is not an enforcement...
Sure. What I've found is that most people that are trying to make a point of embarrassing somebody, don't bother coming to my office. They ambush somebody at a public meeting with a camera.
That's right. Fine, but my point is, this isn't the avenue you take when you have an issue with a zoning thing. You come to your office, right, and you...
I would recommend that to people, but I would also say that if people, that people have a right to take an issue up directly with the council if they want to.
Then it should be stated that way, and then we defer it, and we research it, and promise to get back to them, and that should be that. You don't stoop to the, you know, when you're a two-year-old...
Well, and that's part of the reason why I say that I don't think that, I don't think that we should change the nature of the open forum. I mean, I think that it's really an important thing, and it's... Yeah, I mean, I think that's probably why, I just have to, I have to leave it like that. I do think that there is, there is probably some space for education for people, you know, when they come up to, you know, for us to say to them, you know, please state your issue, that kind of a thing, but it's, you know, the purpose of the forum is for people to communicate with the council, like you said, you know, to bring issue with the council. And I also think that if the issue that's being brought up is something that the council has no jurisdiction or action to, then it's appropriate for the council to tell them, or to inform that person what the actual avenue is to have their complaint heard, and not to burden the council with that information. So that's what I think. Any other thoughts?
It sounds like a really good opportunity to clarify. Like, I don't have much concern about the sign issue, but it sounds like a good opportunity to clarify what it says, and, you know, I think it'd be valuable to show how you are in compliance, just to try to mend or build whatever rough spots there might be.
And I'm just fine doing that. I can put that into a blog post, like, whatever. I mean, it's not, that's not a big deal. I mean, I have no problem with that whatsoever.
That's where it's, to me, if you, let's say you go to Mike's office, and you say, "Here's my concern about this sign,"
Right, Mike can show, yeah.
Then someone can, Mike can say, "Here it is, and if need be, put it in writing and hand it back," instead of this kind of back-and-forth verbal thing, which everyone's busy reading between the lines on, and not reading it for what it is, and then we've lost anything objective or rational, and whatever.
Ah, it's a better story to go to the, to be able to go to the coffee shop with the story of, you know, getting the mayor, or whoever, in a "aha," versus like, "I went to City Hall, and actually, I guess I was wrong," right? So, whatever.
Sure.
Well, at any rate...
Moving on.
So, Mike's concept, or his idea is fair, I think, that, you know, the open forum should, you know, it's a privilege to have that space to air grievances with the council, but I do also think that there is some responsibility that goes along with that. I do, I would highly encourage commissions and committees to start at least audio recording their meetings. Just, you know, Kim's got the recorder, you just hit the button, put it on the desk, and then we at least have an audio recording of what happened, so...
Sure.
Does that work pretty well? I've never listened to the audio recording, you can hear everybody, like...
This works better.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
This is much better.
Do we want to...
We kind of already talked about that idea.
Doing this?
At the last meeting.
Right, I think that's a great idea, especially planning and zoning. Seems like a...
Well, we'll leave that up to the planning and zoning.
Oh.
I think that that's their decision to make of how they want to document it, but we can definitely encourage them to document it in some kind of a recorded method. I think that that's, you know, that's probably how we should proceed with that.
Right, I think it might, you know, it might be worthwhile to consider that, I mean, especially when the claim is that other planning commission members will verify what he seems to be saying, and that, I don't know how that would happen.
Other than Beckwith.
But even that, I don't know how, I mean, what's the exchange that happens that he says, "Oh yeah, I heard that," and the others say, "That was never said?" I mean, I'm not sure what the value of that is.
Right. Well, I think we're spending a lot of time on this, so if there are specific requests that, you know, for changes in policy, I think that we should address those at a later time. But until that time, I think that we should continue with the open forum, and I will instruct people who come up to, you know, be to the point, and then also direct those folks to, you know, an avenue that would be more appropriate if there is... So...
Well, I think, yeah, I just, I think the five minutes should be there five minutes.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to direct them to a point necessarily, but just, I don't know. I wouldn't appreciate that if I started rambling.
Well, I'm, well...
Well, it's not like everything needs an immediate response, you know, it could be, "Okay, fine, we may notice, we're listening, if there's something you need to, we'll get back to you," but we don't have to do it at the moment. They can say their deal and walk out, and we can think about it. It doesn't require a...
I think most of the time that works, and that's definitely my general approach, is not to take bait and not to engage in silly conversations, but sometimes I think you have to. And so, what I'm trying to find out is, is there a way for us to think about that and maybe have a policy, even though I don't care for policies that much, about when do we need to respond, what sorts of things do we let go unchallenged, and what sorts of things need to be corrected? Because now, it's not just us as the audience who can just let things go and not worry about it. Now, there's a permanent recording, twice of him saying that, you know, Councilor Kennedy suggested somebody break the law in a public meeting, which is way more ridiculous.
Okay, you can attach what value you want to that, but that's the whole key to this. He can come and say it for the next five meetings if you would like to. The value on attached to it kind of sits within you. And I'll tell you how much value I give to it, but I'm not going to say it out loud, but... And I still think, when people do that, you need to get your ducks in a row and come back later with something very, you know, to respond right away, you might not have everything. You can easily pull up the law for the sign thing and put it in paper, and put it in writing that needs to be at a right time, and be all organized about it.
Something a situation like this where the claim is made, and clearly that statement was never made...
Yeah, that, that one.
How do you refute that, when you haven't just said that's totally erroneous, that was never said?
Yeah.
I mean, it's his comment, and, I mean, I just think we should just move on from it and recognize it for what it is.
I think that, yeah, and be informed by it, move forward. So, shall we move on to the consent agenda?
Sure.
So I have an addition to the consent agenda.
I was gonna say, this is the...
The application for use of streets and sidewalks. This is, this is an application that I'm putting in for a block party happening on Seventh Avenue, which is going to be being set up from about noon on October 1st to evening.
What does evening mean?
Yeah, that was my question.
Evening means...
Eleven P.M.
Not to break the, not to break the noise ordinance that says that music can't be played after ten.
By ten?
Yeah.
Okay.
So then the barricade would be, would be right at the corner of Seventh Avenue West and First Street West. So that would just be blocking off the, yeah, blocking off that dead-end part of the street for festivities, so...
Is that straight up the street from here?
Yeah, it's straight up the street from me.
Oh, or a dead-end, okay.
Yeah, it's up by, by Carl.
Are there alley accesses behind it?
No.
Not officially.
Because I've talked to the neighbors just about access in and out.
Yep, we've spoken with all the neighbors, the neighbors are in favor of it.
So is this like a neighborhood block party?
Yeah, neighborhood block party, but we're inviting just about anybody, so...
Sounds sketchy.
Anybody wants to come, come on out.
Is this like a potluck? Is this from a Minnesota, or what, do we have to bring something?
You probably should, because if, you know, otherwise, we're going to run out of food, but there'll be lots of...
Not that I got invited, but, you know...
Right. Who isn't invited?
Just about everybody.
Oh, now, I feel really good!
Well, I do get invited, so...
Oh, okay.
Who received a personal invitation?
Because they don't have a four of the city council, I guess.
Yeah, no one received a personal invitation.
Oh, that's, that's right, we couldn't all come. I'll just stay home and...
Oh, should we post it?
Yeah, well, we probably could, it's block party, though, anyway. So that's, we'll throw that on the consent agenda. I probably don't need to abstain from that, because it's just a street thing, but I would be willing to if it was appropriate.
You might as well post it.
I'm gone.
You're gone?
Yeah.
So if Tracy and he don't, well, we still have three, then, well, Kennedy, are you gonna be a...
Might pass through, you know?
I don't know, if you want to post it.
I would love to.
All right, so consent agenda...
That way Bill can come and, you know...
Yeah, Bill, you live right down the street, yeah.
I didn't get invited.
The neighbors are supposed to be walking around to invite people, so, so, sorry about that. You're invited. It's October 1st. You know where it is now, because you've got the report. Okay, five things on the consent agenda. We got the usual three, we've got the Moose-Mosey permit, which is being put in by Visigoe County, and then the application for use of streets and sidewalks. Any additions or further conversation, or I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Was anything different about Moose Madness this year?
I don't think so.
Okay. Because I know before they were, last year, they were talking about doing...
Yeah, this is the Moose-Mosey, this is a...
Oh, this is a different one. I saw the Moose thing.
It's like a walk, fun walk run with Murray the Moose.
Run around Harbor Park.
Okay, never mind. Oh, that's the twen, that is Moose Madness weekend.
It is, it's just one of the events that they need to get...
Oh, not the full thing?
Right.
Yep, because it was in the street.
Did they do a permit for the rest of it?
Most of the events that they're having, if they're having them, are in the parks, so they don't have to come here.
Gotcha.
Because weren't they talking about having vendors or something that's coming in?
They had talked about that last year, I'm not sure whether they're in on that.
Okay, so that's kind of what I asked. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
There's a motion, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Motion and seconds. Any further discussion?
This, sorry, just, this is the tennis court thing, too.
Yes, so there are two additional bills. One is for a standing desk, and the other is for the payment that we approved before for the tennis court reconstruction, so those are being included as well.
Copy that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. Okay, so we're moving along. We have Resolution 2016-12, so I'm gonna turn this one over to Mike, or, you know, yeah, to give a little bit more of the technical details of what this is actually saying, because I had the time to read it, but I wasn't quite sure that I understood it, so...
I'm sure everyone read it in significant level of detail, because it's really easy read. There was an opportunity for people to come and listen to our SIMPA staff folks talk about some of these issues, including this one, that some of you had an opportunity to take advantage of, but I'll try to summarize briefly what's going on here. Eighteen cities come together in joint action, an agency that's called Southern Minnesota Municipal Power. That agency has an agreement that's the basis of what they do, that was formed in the late seventies. It's never been amended since that time. This is the First Amendment. The purpose of this amendment is because two of the eighteen-member cities decided not to renew their power sales contract after 2030. Our current power sales contract with SIMPA goes to 2050. So come 2030, we'll have sixteen members instead of eighteen. A lot of the things that this organization does are long-term type of investments, whether it's in a transmission project or a generation project, where they need to have financing in place beyond 2030 at this point. So what they're thinking about is, in what ways do we offer an opportunity for, first of all, those two current members that will not be members up to 2030 to financially participate in projects that last longer than 2030, but then also any other cities that want to participate? So what they're creating here is a separate type of membership, a membership in a project rather than in the organization. And what it requires is some different rules in the agreement that talk about setting up project boards, and having project members rather than just full members. And that wasn't anticipated when it was created, so that's the majority of what's going on here in this amendment to the, to the agreement, the original agreement.
That makes it a lot clearer to me, because I was not quite sure where the terminating requirements members, where that was going.
Yeah.
This is not going to impact our agreement with SIMPA at all, it's just that it's basically an amendment that all members have to approve in order to have it stand, that would allow them to then have program members instead of...
That's right.
...actual, fully enlisted members.
So we're gonna be a full requirements member till 2050, that's what our current deal with SIMPA says. We won't be looking at individual projects to determine whether we'd be participating. We'll be participating as a member of SIMPA.
Be just for the people who are...
Yeah, yeah.
And totally unrelated to any of the rest of the topics that were discussed, because I came later on that meeting, none of that, that was just on its own, right?
Not related to the projects that they're doing.
We just, as long as they were here, we thought we'd ask them about some other things.
Yeah, okay, great.
But this is the only one that requires action. The Utilities Commission already took action to approve the execution of Amendment Number One to the agency agreement, so this is a concurring resolution, meaning the city council concurs with the PUC's decision to do that, since the PUC is a separate entity and the actual signatory to the agency agreement, whereas we're kind of a concurring.
Which is why Amendment Number One in its entirety is included afterwards, because I thought, also thought it was kind of weird that we had, you know, basically two different, two different amendments, two different...
The resolution has two.
We had to do a resolution, and then they have, then their amendment was there, and I was like, "But we're not approving their amendment."
We are concurring with the amendment approval, so it's basically the same thing as approving the amendment. Then, you know, there's one more attachment, which is the PUC's resolution, and we don't have that published yet, but that'll also be attached to this resolution.
Okay, does that make sense for everybody?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2016-12?
I'll move.
Approval.
There is a movement. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Movement and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. Do we have any other items, as necessary?
Nope.
Okay, then let's move on to our reports. Mr. Mills, what's your report?
Northwoods Food Project met, and the only thing I really wrote down was the Community Center Garden is hoped for, for 2019, so it's a little ways out yet. I did, there was other topics too, but that was everyone I thought to write down to report back to the council. Also, the Broadband Commission met yesterday, and they're curious about any plans we might have for the outpost building that they have going now. I said there's no plans, but the idea is, at some point, it'll probably go away whenever we do bathrooms, or City Hall, or that sort of thing, so, but it's a long ways off. Right now, I believe we agreed to let them use it through December, and they're hoping to go beyond that. I think they're hoping to at least use it through next September, but...
Do you get...
There's no formal request of this one.
Do they have any numbers on how many people have been using it? I mean, they should, because that's...
I'm sorry?
They should have those numbers, because everything's like electronic, right?
Yes, they should have those numbers, and they do have those numbers, however, the first year of operating, and I think it got going in mid-June or something, it was kind of, they don't think it was a very complete rollout, or, you know, they're thinking next summer will be much more successful, so that's what they're hoping.
Well, that's, I mean, that's expectable, I mean, you can expect things to increase as people have more familiarity with it, but, I mean, do they have numbers for how many people have been using it now?
They do, I don't.
You don't, okay.
They do, I do, I don't, there's a subcommittee doing it, but I think the, the kind of, the rough number is it hasn't had more than a third capacity at any one time.
Okay.
Which, I don't know, I mean, that doesn't mean anything to me either, you know, is that third capacity every day, or, you know, I don't, I don't really know.
Okay.
And I think that they have had positive cash flow, but we're not charging them rent, and they also have other donations, you know, so it's, it's not...
Their overhead is low.
Very low, yeah. So... So, um, so that's all kinda getting figured out.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, had a Y council meeting, I believe, as well. And, uh, I don't think I have anything to report there.
Sounds good. Anton?
I got nothing.
Kennedy?
Well, at the last, uh, meeting, council meeting, I was missing, and, uh, I was attending a pro-walk, pro-bike, pro-place conference. On behalf of the Active Living Moving Matters Committee, both Jen Severson and myself went to the conference, and it was, it was really an excellent conference, talking about, uh, trying to expand, uh, walking, biking, and placemaking in communities. I went to one particular workshop, though, that I thought was really relevant to what we're doing with, uh, in regard to our comprehensive plan. It's talking about, uh, building health factors into, uh, the planning process, and this, uh, handout I'm giving you, now there's two, two each one.
Not that one.
Take two. This, just information for, for, for your, for yourselves, uh, but I, but I thought this was really a good example of how, uh, the city of Vancouver is incorporating, uh, decision-making regarding healthy, healthy environments into their, uh, planning processes, and, uh, it goes beyond just the look at land use and some of the things that you would normally expect in a comprehensive plan to, to start talking about impacts that specifically, uh, are surrounding, uh, health, and they've come up with particular, uh, targets and action plans. I thought very, uh, very purposeful of what, what they're doing, so I thought with, with Mike, Mike and Jay going to the Minnesota Planning Conference tomorrow, this fits right into probably some of the things that they're gonna be hearing too about incorporating health issues into the planning process, so hopefully we can, uh, introduce some of these, uh, in our discussions too, as we're considering our planning. So, and the other thing, I, you know, I went to the Affordable Housing Workshop, uh, last week. I thought it was really, um, beneficial to have, um, all the agency people here in the community, uh, hearing about, you know, the issues, hopefully, uh, understanding better when requests come before them for, uh, for funding or for, um, ways, ways to help us address some of the, uh, the issues. And I know, I think most of you, most of all of us were there, at least at one point or another through, through the, uh, through the day. I only got, had an opportunity to get to the afternoon portion of it, but, uh, that portion went, which I sat in for, I thought was, um, productive, and it, it was encouraging to see not only, uh, the agency people there, but also community, uh, people that, you know, are just concerned about, uh, housing, um, and, and how it might, uh, and how decisions get made about, uh, about affordable, about affordable housing, so...
Cool. Anything else?
That's it.
Tracy?
I just wanted to check on one thing. Where are we at with the comprehensive planning group that we hired as a time for us to take some action, or are you, or what's going on?
We're working with them.
What's the status on that?
We've, they've, the, the steering committee has met, um, has met twice in conjunction with, um, Community Design Group. The second time we met, we went through the, uh, the questions that were on the, the community survey, and we've, we've, I think, gotten the community survey to its final draft, which will be published pretty soon on the community planning website, which they've created for us and have published. Um, and we're working on gathering additional resources to put on that website, so that we can have all of this, or a good deal of the studies that have been done in the past fifteen, twenty years up there, so people can review them. And, um, we're, we have another meeting coming up where we're going to actually start putting together specific engagement plans and stuff like that, or like putting specific engagement, um, activities, 'cause the engagement plan has already been done. So, so things are moving along decently well.
They'll, they'll be coming to town in October, the third week of October. Or was it the second week of October?
I have it as the second.
Second week of October. And, so, the plan was perhaps to even have them give you a direct report at your next council meeting, but they'll be here before that to do some, uh, training for the steering committee members and anybody else who wants to participate in how to do the small engagement sessions, and they'll be bringing some toolkit stuff up to, to use for that. Uh, and then they'll actually conduct a couple of input sessions while they're here as well, just to give people a chance to kinda see them in action and how it's done. Then, so the, the survey being ready, and then those tools getting started in October, and be a couple of weeks here, and we'll be deep into the, uh, gathering of input, uh, that we'll probably spend another two months on to try and get to a good basis of understanding what people are up to.
Okay, that's great. And a couple of weeks ago, we talked about it, and it was probably more than, actually, weeks, month, you know, meetings ago, we talked about it, but can we get copied on some of those things, so we know what's at the meeting and things are that are going on?
Um, well, I know we brought up the last steering committee meeting at, at your last council, but that, we don't have a, a good, um, communication tool yet that I think would be useful, some kind of a newsletter or report or something that we can give, not just you, but anybody who's interested in kinda what's going on. That part hasn't been built yet.
Well, you know, like when you hold a meeting, you send out a meeting notice or different things, right?
Yeah, there's an agenda that goes on.
Yeah, we could just get copied on all that. Be good to know. I didn't realize all that stuff, good stuff was going on, so that's great. Yeah, I'd like to know and be more in on all that. That's it, I have no, I know I have no other stuff.
Okay, so that was the steering committee update, which was part of my update, so that'll be great. We don't wanna talk about that. Um, met with the lieutenant governor, um, a week and a half ago, I think it was, um, and played some table tennis against her, beat her pretty bad. It was great.
Were you really competitive?
I slammed it pretty hard. Actually, I'm a terrible table tennis player. Uh, she's a good sport. So we went and we talked about, about the placemaking, uh, placemaking stuff that we've been doing in the community, and also brought up a lot of the, uh, the state-level initiatives that we, that we have. She was really great to talk to, I think that she really was listening to what we had to say. So we talked to her about our housing situation, we talked to her about, um, about the DNR's project in the harbor, talked to her about the Sawtooth Bluffs project. She seemed really excited about that, which I thought was good, about renewable energy, about the PUC facility. It was, I mean, there was a lot of things that we talked about, we covered a lot of ground in a very short period of time, and, um, and I thought that it was really productive. So, so that's good, I really appreciate it when, when folks like that come to town and are willing to chat with us. So, um, the next meeting I have on my list was, uh, I went to a Spearhiking Trail Board Meeting, where they're looking at improving the connection to Grand Marais, um, which, uh, pretty much means as we move forward with the Sawtooth Bluffs project, we should include them in that conversation. They bring resources to that conversation as well as, um, a lot of, of energy. They have over five thousand members in the Spearhiking Trail now, uh, Association, and, um, and are working, this next year, starting the process of working on improving bridges dramatically on the entire trail. So, so, so they're, they're really interested in, you know, making the trail better. They've, this year is the year that they're gonna finish the trail, like, actually finish it. It's gonna go from Wisconsin, the Wisconsin border, all the way to Canada. So now they're starting to change the tack of the, the association from building to continuing to maintain and develop. So, so that's, that's a conversation to be had in the future.
I hope that, um, the school has really brought in on that conversation, because they have a lot of, uh, land with trails that the Spearhiking Trail gets really close to, and that seems like a really good connection.
I don't think that we could develop that Sawtooth Bluffs area without their involvement. And there's been a conversation about using the Nature Boy Trails behind the school to, to complement and be a gateway to that Sawtooth Bluffs area. So I think that, I think that that's part and parcel of it, that those things are hand in hand.
Keep in mind, the school board was, um, briefed and did pass a motion to support the, our application for scoring on the Sawtooth Bluff project, so...
And they also, they, me personally, not as a city person, but, um, me personally, they, they sponsored me to apply for a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to actually develop those trails.
Great.
So, so I think that they're on board, but it, you're right, the conversation should include them.
Did you get it?
Yeah.
Oh.
It was a bummer. It would've been really nice if we could have...
Next year.
Maybe. Uh, I also went to a non-traditional lenders group meeting, or that, that happened last week, and I was, this is more so, I mention this for, for people who may be watching, that there are a number of really incredible funds in this area that are there to help people start businesses. And I think that, you know, when we all got elected, it was, entrepreneurship was a big push for us, was a big thing that we said we wanted to do. And I think that, that having, um, or encouraging some sort of organization so that it's easier to get information from those people, I think, is a good idea. I don't think we really need to do anything with it particularly, but it, there are a lot of, of funds and, and foundations that have really good financing options for, for businesses in our area, and I would encourage people to take advantage of those.
Well, and for, and for those people that are looking at exploring startup, business startups, you know, talking to Mary Somis at the, the EDA is really a, you know, really an important step. Uh, Mary has access to the, the knowledge about those programs and can, can feed that information on. Pat Campanaro too, with the Small Business Partnership, uh, same thing. We have some, some, some great resources here, uh, for people to, to utilize.
Yep, and I think that as much as we can utilize it, the better. I got a, a great letter from, from a, a community member, uh, asking just a simple question. Can we put a disc golf, uh, an eighteen-hole disc golf course up at the golf course? And I thought, well, I don't know. I told him to talk to the park board, because that's their, their dealio, but, um, but the concept of having a, a Frisbee Golf, um... Is he still there?
Yeah.
What was it different called? Uh, having a Frisbee Golf course at the, at the actual, like, you know, golf ball, of course, would, I think, would expand the, um, the usage and maybe actually really fun for it, or really good for that space. Can't take you anywhere.
Is that hard on, on, on greens? I'm not a golfer.
No, I mean, it's, it would just be people walking on the greens, just like, like golfers would.
Yeah, so then...
It would be the same thing, it'd probably be less, less damaging, because you don't have people taking out divots with their clubs.
Well, I think it was on the periphery too.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, so I mean, they would...
It's not like in the...
Oh, they don't use all the nine holes, they just want parts of them.
On the edge, I think.
Yeah, and so, just to throw it out there, there's, it appears from the conversations that I've had that there is a group of, um, disc golfers in our area that are motivated enough that they would be willing to help design this course for, for relatively low expense. So an eighteen-hole golf course, um, you know, would be eighteen, eighteen of the baskets that we would have to buy, and they're about a hundred bucks apiece. And that, uh...
Oh, I thought there were a lot more. I thought they were twelve hundred bucks apiece.
If you, I don't, I think that sounds ridiculous, but...
Well, they'll get their numbers.
But if, yeah, so they're gonna do the research, and, and then they'll bring it to the park board first, um, and then if it, if it catches some, some ground, then we'll hear about it.
That could be fun.
Yeah.
I thought it'd be really cool.
I had some inner, some, some conversation with him as well, and, um, I suggested getting the group together, then talking with Mike, the golf course supervisor, and then going to the park board, just to see if Mike has any concerns or thoughts and that kinda stuff, and then go to the park board and then do the spiel, and then we'd hear about it here, but...
Yeah, I think that's, um, makes sense.
How much longer does Mike stay?
Hard to say, as long as he wants.
No, no...
Well, seasonally.
He's seasonally, he reads for the winner. So I mean, they just should catch him before he...
Depends on how long we decide to stay open, and then sometime after that.
He stays a little longer, yeah.
And it sounds like the group is more of a west-end group right now, um, and the, the designer, I think, was based out of the cities, I wanna say.
Yeah.
But it was someone who, who's done many of them.
Yeah, they're saying that the designer, they, you know, having him come up would cost sev-, you know, several hundred dollars, um, and that a bunch of the disc golf players would probably be able to come up with some pretty good ideas without paying that money, um, 'cause they've played lots of courses in lots of different places. So anyway, I mentioned that, 'cause I was, I was pretty excited by it, I thought it was really cool. Maybe I would start playing disc golf again.
Not since the accident?
Not since the accident. So I got, I got a couple more things, and then I'll be done. I had, uh, it's a, it's a shoulder, just, um, I, I received, I received a, a message from the National Wildlife Federation, and some people in town here are in, in favor of this as well, they've talked to me about, about trying to find ways to promote monarch butterflies, planting milkweed, things like that around, um, around the community, and I think this has gotta be kind of a, a community-led thing, you know? Like, people can plant this in their own spaces, um, and encourage monarch butterflies, but have it on the record that there are resources available for that if anybody is interested in, in pursuing, you know, raising monarch butterflies or, you know, creating habitat for them.
The Utilities Commission has been handing out free seat packs for pollinators for six weeks now.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Includes some things that I'm sure monarch butterflies will enjoy as habitat as well.
This past week, there were two League of Minnesota City Policy Groups that I sat in on, um, listening to over the phone. Uh, one of them was the Improving Local Economies, and that was, uh, it was an interesting conversation. That one there, um, the Council, the Coalition for Greater Minnesota Cities, actually had a pretty strong presence in that conversation, because there was a, um, a policy amendment that was being proposed by the city of Rosemont to, um, to change some of the calculations for, for local government aid, which would, um, have decreased local government aid to, um, to really rural communities, kind of like us. So, uh, that, there were quite a few people who spoke against it, the resolution, they didn't, they didn't actually, um, vote on it, so that'll have to happen at the next one, but I thought that was kind of interesting.
What did, what was Rosemont's, um, reasoning for that?
I think that it's just the person who put it forward from Rosemont was the author of the bill, you know? So I don't think that it was, it was something that, that other cities had, had proposed, because it would make, in, in, in their calculations, it would make local government aid more even across, but it, but it would also take outlying areas like us and just kinda leave us hanging, because we, you know, we...
You can't get lower than zero.
You can't get lower than zero, yeah, anyway.
Oh...
That's where we're headed.
Yeah, so, so that was the concept.
So in other words, they, they were redesigning to their own benefit?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
So, you know, making it...
More fair.
So in other words, we need, we would almost need to come back to the table with one redesign for our benefit.
The idea that they're gonna revisit that formula is just gonna happen.
No, it's very, very, very...
It's so difficult to get the state to do anything to, to change that formula. They've actually gone through some rather significant efforts in the past ten years. I can't see any one city showing up with an idea that's gonna have any traction.
So they do this just for show, or just to make a voice, just to be heard, that we're unhappy with how this is?
And this is at a policy committee for the League of Minnesota Cities, so what they're doing is setting the platform for the league's lobbyists who are gonna talk to the state about it.
Yeah, so, so it's, um, it, you know, when you look at it in the broader scope, we've got the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities lobbying, the people who are members of the League of Minnesota Cities who are lobbyists for the state, so it's just like, you know, this is, this is really convoluted. But it was an interesting conversation. Last thing I have, library board met last night, um, we discussed, uh, the position, uh, the assistant director position, which three applications, or maybe more, have been received, um, and that closes on the, in October, right? Sometime, beginning of October. Sometime then, which is pretty exciting, they're really getting excited for that. They replaced a bunch of technology, a bunch of new computers, um, and have been improving some of the technology for the employees so that they, when they check in books, they don't have to actually, like, have, you know, the scanner there, they have these little wands that they can just go, oop, 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 on all the barcodes for all the books, and then it automatically checks it in.
Makes that sound pretty awesome.
Oh, is that the kind of...
If you see that around the library all the time, that's exactly, they're just checking in books.
Is that the Pat, Patron Connor kind of re...
Is that the patron counter conversation in the notes?
No, the patron counter conversation was that we, we bought this, this counter that went on the front door. So when people went through, then it went, you know, it recorded one.
Oh, you mean literally count, not a counter. Oh, got it.
So that was, that was like literally a counter, like a laser counter, but it broke.
Machine that.
So we had to, so we had to send it back to the, the people who made it and they, they said they were going to replace it at their cost, so that's good. But those numbers have been a lot more accurate than the way we have counted in the past, which is basically to just like have one of the people sitting at the counter look up every fifteen minutes.
At the counter top.
We go to the counter again.
Yeah, I know.
The other one.
Yes, at the counter counter.
Horizontal flat surface.
That's it, that one. Having one of the clerks count every fifteen minutes over the course of a couple of days. And we've found that with the actual laser counterer,
Sure.
that, that our numbers are way higher than we had previously anticipated.
Don't you want the woman sitting in the chair and this guy with the clicker?
No.
That's been on for years. Probably there.
That's all I have. You guys have anything?
We're going to the planning conference, Jay and I, leaving tomorrow. Couple of the sessions that I'm planning on attending, one which is what goes wrong with community engagement events?
Anticipation.
It's being put on by David Schultz, who's a professor of ethics at Hamlin University. I know him and his qualities, so that'll be fun. One that's from the city of Duluth giving a presentation on vacation rental by owner.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, and then there's a couple of more that are just about doing good, community engagement events, so. Looking forward to it and hopefully you'll have a lot of good, useful information to put to use right away.
There was one that I saw that I wanted to go to.
Yeah, what did you pick up, Jay?
Though, I'm trying to find it. The, there's one for supporting local and regional.
Beaver Island Brew Pub Walking Tour.
Oh, that was it.
That may happen. Supporting local and regional food systems is one that I, that I was interested in going to. And there was another one that was like, was not, it wasn't the one, "Policy Planning Goes Wrong", but it was something like.
Did it start out MOA?
Pitfalls of Bad Policy, or something like that, was what it was called. So it was basically trying to figure out how not to create policies that will put you in a corner. So I'm gonna, I'm interested in that one. Anything else? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day, everybody.
Bye, Chris.
Bye, Chris.
Well, have a nice time at your conference.